Meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is public comment. And seeing no one, let's move on. Woo-hoo. All right. Yes. Second item is superintendent update. Dr. Baez.
Madam Chair, thank you, members of the committee and colleagues of this. We had a professional development. I'll get used to it. We had a professional development day today. Went really, really well. We had a little tech issue, but beyond that, our staff showed up. We had a lot of positive comments. And I just want to thank all those that participated. And I'd like to thank Jonathan and his team for helping to organize it and our, I guess, the honor over here, Matt, who kind of just leads the thing with his one-liners that gets people going. But we had a good day. It was a positive day. We looked at cultural issues in terms of our student population. We're taking a look at family engagement. So overall, we'll report back some thoughts from the staff about today. It was a little different than what we've been doing, but still was a positive day. I participated in the morning with the staff. The traffic lights have been changed. Just wanted to let you know. We have, are now seeing improvements. I'd like to thank the town hall, specifically Mark Terrell, for his work in making that happen. They've made a shift over by that split by the town hall, which then has allowed everything to go a little quicker. And I've actually seen that shift myself here as I come up from the library in the morning, most mornings. I've completed the parent office hours for this month of October and November. I didn't have a lot of participation, but I did learn some things. And I also did staff office hours in every school. I will continue both of those in the month of, end of November into the beginning of December, including I'm going to do our first virtual ones with families in probably early December, really early, like the first week. And those are just introductions, get to talk to parents, get to meet them where they are and the issues that they want to talk about, and so on and so forth. I want to make a comment about transportation. I made some pretty straightforward comments in my newsletter this past week that may have caused the five of you and others some stress. That wasn't my intent. My intent was to simply actually give gratitude to the school committee for being positive in getting rid of the fees and putting into operational. But then I guess it looked, I don't guess, I was informed that it looked like the school committee also set up the day-to-day operations of what happened with transportation. That's not true. That was, it wasn't on me. It was on my former colleague in this seat, but the fact is I own it now, so it's in the superintendent's seat. I plan on making some significant changes and providing those as an update to you as early as late winter into the early spring, so that we can do that. I will also tell you that the budget is looking to support yet another bus as well, so that we can get students on. And this morning, or this afternoon, at the principals' meeting, we talked about some communication out to families that are not utilizing. So they signed up, but they're not utilizing. And if they'd be willing to communicate with us that they're not going to be using it, so that we can actually then give up that seat to a student on the waiting list. So I'd like to make sure that I inform the committee of that. I'm sorry if you took some social media hits on that, but that wasn't the intent. The intent was truly to say you did the right thing, but I wasn't clear on the second part that it was done by administration. The Ms. Fussany, Joyce Fussany, has formally resigned as the director of facilities, so I'll be putting together a working group. I'll be looking to have a member of the committee volunteer to be on that as part of the process. And then the last, we're working on capital planning and articles, trying to figure out from the town side if we're looking at just capital or if we're going to have to create our own article, because we have to have that done as well by the end of December. And then lastly, the Stoughton High School scoreboard and the recovery of the back of it is in play. We have a plan. We actually did take down that piece. It should be with our contractor, and we should be able to put that back up. So we've requested that. We've also requested for the footings to be completed, because it's still looking like it's not a finished product. The idea was that Mr. Barbosa mentioned this, as well as others, that the scoreboard is now in front of the building. And so you can see it from the stands, great, but if you're sitting on the other side, it just looks like a black canvas, and it actually does have a night that goes with it. So we'll be putting that back up. Okay? That's all I have for you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
Yes.
Amanda?
A couple of comments. I appreciate it.
Sorry.
A couple of comments. MCAS results are back, I see, from, I've gotten a couple from my kids. And I was hoping, wondering, it's probably a good time to start to commilling the data that we talked about in previous meeting. And I'm hoping you can, at our next meeting, give us a little bit more status on the MCAS results, and perhaps even normal district bar graphs, so we can see what the distribution is, where the kids are scoring lowest and highest, something like per grade. And of course, that will give us that baseline on how we do in the years coming up.
Great. So just as in response to Mr. Barbosa, I'll be working with Jonathan on this, but our data specialist has already completed all the bar graphs. Those were sent to me yesterday, and they'll be prepared and ready to preview to you ahead of time, so that you can really look at it. And then we'll bring it up at the next meeting through Jonathan's office to give you some feedback. We already have some calculations of high, low, meeting, not meeting, and all of that already done, ready to go. We'll make sure it's at the next meeting. We'll send it ahead of time, so that you can take a look at it.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay.
Another question. I'm not too sure how to say this without violating open meeting laws, so I'm just going to say perhaps sometime in the future, give us an opinion on what you think of this particular idea. And our media's full of violence in our society, particularly mass shooting. I was wondering, how can we give our children a new message when they graduate, a more positive message? And I thought perhaps we can have our children take CPR courses if it fits in their curriculum in some way. I even think about potential making a graduation requirement. You don't graduate for Stoughton unless you're CPR certified. I know that's a lot, and they have a ton of other things to do. I was wondering if in the future, you can perhaps give us a status on whether that's a crazy idea or something. And one of the things I did, I thought it was a unique idea, except I searched on the Internet, and I found out some states required as a law. I was shocked, but, and I thought it is possible, and perhaps something we can consider in the future for Stoughton.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Barbosa, I'll absolutely bring that up to the high school administration and team, and Mr. Ford at Under Curriculum, to take a look at. I do know that there are districts in the Commonwealth who take the last week or so with seniors in particular, and provide this kind of real-world application as part of their last week of school, instead of just the traditional exams and all of that stuff. I used to work in one of those as a teacher many years ago. Community services done then, CPR for, and again, it wasn't a requirement, but it was an opportunity for kids to get that type of stuff. We also had some opportunities in my most recent district, where we actually did safety protocol for students going away to college. Specifically, we had, you know, defense mechanisms with both males and females in separate groups, because they felt more comfortable that way. But yes, I don't think this is a bad idea and something that we should absolutely consider. Anything towards graduation requirements usually means you need to implement it over time. In other words, you don't all of a sudden implement a graduation requirement. Usually you start with your freshmen or your sophomores, and you say, hey, by this time, you have to take this type of a class. And we either offer it or have third parties that come in. And absolutely, we'll take a look at it and see if there's a place for it.
Yeah, I think it would give everyone a great message. You can save lives, as opposed to what we get in media as mass shootings and so on. Our students will be able to say, I'm skilled, I came from Stoughton, I can save lives.
Can I just add something? We, in every sixth grader in Stoughton does basic CPR, life-saving, first aid for adults and children and babies as part of their health class.
Fantastic.
Yeah. It's not a certification or graduation requirement, but they do take it as part of their health class. We had one student, one year, who used what she had learned in sixth grade to save her newborn baby sister at Mass General Hospital. It was like a, kind of a big deal, so.
Wow. Very good.
I was going to say, this also sounds like a great thing for the wellness committee to think of, as you're revamping the health curriculum, to consider what could be part of that. Perhaps that's the logic place for it. We don't know, but that is something to consider.
One last thing, and it's, it's not here, so perhaps it'll just, I'll just shut up, but homework and homework policy, I don't know if you have any status at this point?
I'll defer to the chair.
Well, that was going to come up under other matters, so.
Oh, let's leave it for that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the superintendent? All right. Thank you, Dr. Baez.
Thank you.
And today we have with us our student advisory committee representative, newly elected president, and congratulations. Morgan Griffin. If you want to, I'll hand it to you. What do you have for us?
Thank you. So we just recently had our freshmen inaugurated into the student council this last month, which was very successful. So they've just started understanding how student council works in high school and how they can get more involved. And with that, we have started working on our pep rally, making our big posters, and planning out all the fun activities, which is super exciting. And we also have started our powder puff teams practices, as well as our cheerleaders are also now practicing, which is super exciting, and I encourage everybody to watch, because it will be quite a show. We also, in school, are moving into term two this upcoming Thursday, so our final grades for term one are ending, I want to say Thursday, but with the strange days of no school on some days this week, it's kind of mind-boggling. But on top of that, everyone's still kind of settling in the school, but as of right now, everything is going great, and our student council is rolling in a little more, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. You guys may recognize Morgan, who was from the Hanson Playground last year. She was one of the drivers of that. So if this, especially as now that you have the freshmen, and if you guys think of any projects related to that, we'd love to hear from you, so we're looking forward to it.
And Madam Chair, if I would, if it's okay, Morgan, would you be willing to announce the special date that's happening with you tomorrow?
Oh, yes, of course. Tomorrow is the National Letter of Intent Day all across America, and tomorrow I will be signing my letter of intent to Franklin Pierce University to play women's lacrosse, so it's very exciting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Well, thank you very much. I always enjoy hearing from, thank you, I enjoy hearing from our students. I forget my button, too. Now we move on to new business. The first item we have is the Class of 1973 Scholarship in Memory of James Clark. We have a letter on behalf of the Stoughton High School class of 1973, offering a scholarship to a student committed to this community and school, preferably one going into education, in honor of former Stoughton High School teacher, Mr. James Clark, who was the class of 1973's advisor. Do I have a motion to, first of all, do I have any questions about the scholarships? This is one of our duties to accept these scholarships and make them available, so they can become available to the students. Do I have a motion to accept the Class of 1973 Scholarship in Memory of James Clark?
So moved.
All right. The motion was made by Lindsay. A second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Fabian. The motion's been moved and seconded. Any questions or debate? Let's vote.
I just want to say, I think this is like, I don't know, scholarships to me are just like such a beautiful way to honor the memory of people. I'm excited that we have these coming before us, and just, I really appreciate the Class of 1973, as well as the Daw School PTO for putting these forward. I just think it's like a really wonderful way to honor the memory of people, and like a way that supports our current students.
I agree, especially since these are in honor of teachers. And the Class of 1973 actually included the class letter that Mr. Clark wrote them, and that was really fun to read. It was really sweet, so really appreciated that.
Amanda, did you have a question or a comment?
No.
Vote.
Aye.
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 All right. The motion is carried 5-0. Thank you to the Class of 1973. We appreciate your honoring, and this way, the memory of a teacher who really inspired you is very moving. The next item is the Jennifer L. Jacobs Scholarship acceptance. We have a letter from Mr. Cancellery on behalf of the Daw Elementary School PTO, offering a scholarship to graduating seniors who attended the Daw School, who will be majoring in education. And this scholarship is offered in honor of Jennifer L. Jacobs, the Daw teacher and assistant principal who passed away this summer. Do I have a motion to accept the Jennifer L. Jacobs scholarship?
So moved.
All right. I'll give it to Fabian. A second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Lindsay. All right. The motion has been moved and seconded. Vote.
Aye.
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 All right. The motion is carried 5-0. Thank you very much to the Daw School PTO for this lovely and very fitting tribute to beloved educator. We continue to hold the Daw community and Mrs. Jacobs' family, friends, colleagues, and our students, past and present, in our thoughts. Really appreciate this opportunity. Need a minute here. Just, again, very moving to have teachers remembered in this way. Moving on, the wellness committee appointment. I would like to nominate Chris Shannon as the school committee representative for the wellness committee. So Mr. Colontoni will be reaching out to you and getting the meetings rolling. I did want to take a minute to thank all of the parents and guardians who reached out to volunteer for the wellness committee. We had an overwhelming number of really great candidates, enough to fill the positions many times over. We're really delighted to see this really strong interest in collaboration and parent-school engagement. So thank you to everyone who volunteered for that. The next is the North River Collaborative Quarterly Report, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Baez, who's our representative for that.
Thank you. I just attended actually the second meeting this week, and being a new member of the North River Collaborative, what you have before you is what's required by Mass State Law, which is that you folks receive a quarterly report on behalf, I won't go through each of the lines, but it's really an update of what took place this past summer within their programming. As you know, we utilize North River for students, as well as transportation. The, I can also tell you beyond this report, that the institution is in good financial shape. You should be receiving your first financial quarterlies any day now, and those are just sent to the chair, and I typically share with everybody. And then lastly, we're also, at the meeting the other day, really, they're collecting some information on behalf of all the districts, things like salaries and benefits for employees, path professionals was one that I just filled out, so that we can take a look at the comparisons of all the districts. Some of these districts are like us, some are very different, but it gives another sense of information. And then lastly, they're also doing it for professional development, which is a really important one, because it allows for us to allow our teachers and administrators to work with other teachers and administrators potentially on the same day, i.e., election day next year. Probably every school district is going to be closed in the Commonwealth, who probably want to do PD. That'll be a discussion you folks can have later about the school calendar, but the fact is, there's a potential that many of us would have the same PD day, where we could have teachers and administrators going to other school systems, and we could be hosting other schools here on that particular day. And they're going to try to take the lead on helping to put that together. And that's the final report on that.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the North River Collaborative Report? Lindsay?
Not a question, just, I think that's a really exciting opportunity for the professional development.
Yeah.
I think collaboratives are like really well-positioned to offer a lot of strong professional development, and it's just exciting.
I agree.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to the topic that's probably going to take up most of this meeting, is the FY24 Budget Draft Review. And I turn that over to Dr. Baez and Ms. Heidi Perkins.
So as Ms. Perkins goes up, you are going to take what you have and put it to the side, because you're about to get a new one. You will see a number of these over the next few weeks as part of the process. I want to thank the entire administrative team for putting together many new, many ideas, many thoughts, areas that they want to see us continue to. Thank you. Improve on. We have a lot of work to do over the next few weeks with the budget. I just want to go on record to tell you that, number one. Number two, as you know, we've had to begin a process with you as a newer committee, and then us being new to the district, of really trying to incorporate having more and more people involved in the process that are part of your team here. So our principals all met with myself and Heidi, directors, and so on and so forth. And the idea behind that is they're in the trenches, they're talking to their teachers, they're looking at class sizes, and so on and so forth. As we get closer to the next two meetings, you'll also start to see what I would call higher-end priorities that are truly aligned to our triennial plan, number one; number two, to the needs of the district. We are probably reporting out an increase in enrollment of easily over 100 students from last year, maybe even approaching closer to the 150 or 170. Again, we have some churn that takes place within the district, so kids in and out, so we'll get, but our October and one numbers shows that. As I mentioned before, today, we announced through Dr. Quealy's workshop, you know, that's 621 students, ELs and FLEPS students in the district, and climbing to over 630 by the end of this week into next week. And that includes approximately 25 to 30 students of the, that are over at the Sinister Hotel as part of the migrant student population that's moving to the region. Clearly, our population increase with ELs is not our migrant population. Over the last two and a half fiscal years, we've increased the total number of EL students and FLEPS students in the district to almost twofold. Added to that, we have approximately 760 special education students that are receiving services within the district. And of course, a few combination of students being both EL and special ed does take place, but that is a significant population out of the 3,700 students, 3,700-plus students that attend our school district. So the process has also required that we go backwards to go forward, and I'll let Heidi speak a little bit about that in terms of what, some of the things she's had to really dig into to be able to do that. One of the things I count on is a paper trail of changes, and one of the things I try to do with Ms. Perkins and her team upstairs is really just say, I need this, I need that, but I'm not in Munis, I don't touch it, I don't, I don't even have the icon on my computer anymore, because I really want it to be about that checks and balances that's supposed to take place between my office, you folks, and the business office. It's really a triangulation of the process, not including what then takes place at town hall and all of that, and then eventually auditors. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Heidi.
Okay. So we're off and running for FY25 budget, and as Dr. Baez just said, I'll just sort of review the process to date, what our process looked like. So we sent out budget templates to all the budget makers that gave them information of what their budget was last year, and then we, you know, gave them a little bit of time to get together with their teams and get back to us with their requests, and send those templates back to us. That is really only their expense budgets. They don't budget for staffing, other than small summer work and things like that that they need. And then on the salaries, because both the assistant director and I are new, as is the sped director, superintendent, and several other people in the office, we didn't have institutional and historical knowledge, so we did a lot of reaching out to people to sort of learn what is. And so we pulled, we contacted all the principals, which we do every year anyway, to say, who is in your building? What are they doing? To really find out from boots on the ground, what is there for staff? And then we pull everything out of Munis as well, and we tick and tie every single person, their step, their lane, et cetera. Michelle isn't here this week, but she worked on that. Again, because we haven't settled our para contract for next year or our Unit A contract as of yet, the amounts, you know, we spoke about this, but for the public's sake, the amounts that are in the majority of the lines are 23 rates, because our teacher's contract goes back to September of this year, once we settle, so we don't have an increase, so we can't put anything on those lines. Last year, when the budget was done, they did put a certain amount in the lines with anticipation of a contract settlement, but it's, we probably will come in something north of that when all is said and done. So some of that money, I will just point out at the start, there is a amount of money that is set aside in the administration line under the superintendent's office that is for Unit A negotiations, that will be whatever from this year gets compounded for next year, whatever the COLA is for next year, the para contract negotiations that is underway, and all of the, all of the non-aligned individual contract people, that's also in there, as well as some other small adjustments. So that's, that's sitting there as a set aside, which is typical in a budget year when you don't have settled contracts. You have to set aside a certain amount of money to be able to take care of whatever comes out of the contract negotiation. So that's there. And so after, that is extensive work to do the salary line, that is, you know, roughly 80% of a school budget. It's very detailed, as well as stipends, and some of the positions that maybe were in ESSR, and now they're coming out of ESSR. We did have discussion about what is in ESSR III that ends at the end of this coming year, and what things, you know, did we feel like we wanted to bake in as a level service? And so I'll just bring that up quickly. There's only one thing that we added, which was we have 12 interventionists in ESSR right now, but at different hours per week, it equates to probably five full-time. So there is a line in here to add the five full-time interventionists, one at each of the elementaries. That would come out of ESSR. Everything else will go away when ESSR goes away. So just wanted to point that out. I know that was one of the questions that the committee would have, and that is identified with the notes that are in the columns in the blue ink there, that there is something added from ESSR. Once all of that comes back, we obviously compile it, and we look for any large variances up or down to sort of tell us that we need follow-up conversation with different department heads, which we then had. This is not finalized. There will be, not only because of negotiations, there are still a few things that are changing. As you know, the, you know, a version went out last week. This is updated with the most recent and best information we have, but I do think that the special education tuitions, but particularly the transportation, and including our homeless, is going to increase in the next version that you get. So they're working through that now and doing some, basically, sort of doing an expectation of where they'll land for the end of this year with all the students that have moved in, the rising cost of, or the rising number, sorry, of students that are out placed for out-of-district tuition in our special education department. So there obviously will be more vans, more buses, more transportation situations. So they're working now to do a projection of this year, and then that will become what I use as the new projection for next year. The other addition, Mr. Colontoni was here, as you know, there was a, an HR department added for this year, or two positions, I should say, really were added for this year, but there was not a departmental budget in the budget, when the budget was made for this year, at this time last year. So that left him with a department with no budget for spending. So we are incorporating the expenses of the HR department into this year's budget, but they were not, those expenses were not budgeted for this year, and those have been added. We split them out into the HR budget, and then the DEIB, diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, if that's what the district settles on for a name, but that's what we put in there for now, that's pretty commonly used. So for our diversity efforts that he will be in charge of, and it's split out, you know, it will just make it clearer to the public, more transparent. And additionally, if it ever becomes that the department grows and there is a separate director of DEIB someday, it'll be a very clean cut of the two budgets. So that's why those are separated. So you'll just see on page two, it's in yellow, it just says new. We don't have accounts in Munis yet to give it a department number, so those were added since the version that went out last week. So that's sort of the highlight reel of how we come up with, you know, through the budget process. It's obviously much more detailed and lengthy, but that's a quick overview of that. I think probably since you've had a chance to look at it last week, and I know it's short notice right now, and I was, had the opportunity to answer some questions earlier today about specific lines that I believe the committee. lines that I believe the committee all shared. The answers to, if there's anything specific, you know, rather than me droning on, if there's things that you already can, you know, see and you don't need to hear about, I'll turn it back and see if there's something specific that you have questions for me about, and then I can move on from there.
Just the curiosity. Oh, sorry.
So I was sort of gonna say thank you for the, for the update, but yes, go ahead.
I was wondering why the departments are not listed in, in numerical order? They just seem to be jumbled up?
It's the exact same way it was last year. That's why, because it's a template, and that's the, I don't know exactly why. I think it was like things together, and over time, just like with the HR budget, whatever's available in the numerical sequence to number HR, it really belongs with administration. But the numbering that we might have to choose might fall out of order with other things that were determined long ago.
I can, as a 2000, 1998 to 2004 member of the Stoughton School Committee, this is still the same format.
Yeah, that answers the question.
It's, it's a little different than a lot of other places do it. It makes sense over time, if you start to see it, but you're absolutely right, the department numbers are all over the place, instead of just very clear numbers that go in order and everything else.
And if it makes it easier, I could actually just leave the department numbers off, I'll just move that column off next year, and just, we'll just have the titles, it's, it's fine. I just sort of thought this is what they, everybody was used to. So, and when you come into a district, you don't, you don't change anything, at least in the first year. But this actually, it does make a lot of sense, I mean, the way it's laid out, similar to, even if it's printed out of UNIS, it's the same information. So, you know, we'll look at that over the coming year. But hopefully it's clear, at least, because it was, you know, when I looked at it, I said, okay, this is actually pretty clear. So.
One more question.
Sure.
Is there a way to present some of this data in a graph form? It's, for me, anyway, it's easier to see instead of numbers.
I would be honest, that I would not undertake doing all of this data in graphs. That would be many, many, many lines of graphs. But if there's something specific that you would want, or like a bucket?
It'd be easier to see if it's going up, going down.
You mean the overall budget?
Yeah.
So like just the bottom line?
Yeah.
Compared to the last couple of years?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Heidi, I was also thinking, and again, you can say no, I don't want to put you on this, but one of the things to do would be staffing versus expenses, versus, versus like transportation, as maybe just a graph, because that will show the true picture because of where our, our, most of our money is expended in, in people.
Yeah.
As just an, an opportunity for you to see it. And that's a good chart to keep over time, because what it does is it sends a very clear message around two items. Number one, that we're just not expending money by hiring people, that it's actually connected to student enrollment and student needs. And that's a very important thing to do with town meeting, with the finance committee. We're just not creating a position. We're doing it because there's a population of students that need further support. So when you're seeing an increase in special education, as example, because you're starting new programs, that becomes something that is very difficult. People say, well, we can't do that, we can't hire that. Well, it's a mandate. You have to. It's either that, or we're sending them to North River, or to one of our other collaboratives. So, just as a.
Oh yeah, that'd be great.
You and I can talk about, you know, like five or six things that maybe they'd be on a graph or something.
What, what I think we should do, and I agree with you, we're not going to inundate anybody, but I think there are key ones that we can present that show some storylines for us over time. And it's pretty easy, it's easy to go back and look at numbers, but it would, it would, it would set us going forward.
Fantastic.
To say this is an opportunity for us to really see where we're spending our money. And so if we're starting, excuse me, if we're starting, if we have EL students, for example, this year, we added 2.0 FTEs after the budget for EL alone, or three, just, just alone, after the budget was done, because of this huge growth of students that we've had, and we have to service them under both federal and state law. So that graph could then show two parts. It could show what we presented, what was voted, what had to change, and now you see the outcome for the following year, if we had to add more people.
Fantastic, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would probably be, it probably would not be ready for, in two weeks from now, because there's still more work to do on this budget. I would just say that, but.
And I don't think the pressures, and I'll defer.
In December.
I'll defer, I think we can do it for December, but more importantly, that we can continue the conversations about our budget into January and February. Even though it's been released, we, we still are able to prepare for the FinCon meetings, the public and all of that stuff, because I think it's important. It's, it's going to be a little bit different over time on how we do business about this budget, because we have, we have a story here to tell that is very, very important to tell.
And you can tell a lot better with graphs than with tables and tables and tables.
Yeah, everybody has their way of how they like it, so.
The little, the little blue marks, actually, I thought was, were very helpful during town meeting. I felt like we nipped a lot of questions in the bud, because we had where, why things moved, or where they moved to, and where they were coming from, why there was a huge increase. It, it just seemed like, I noticed the town went back and added them into their own.
Oh, that's good.
So, I do appreciate that. It's helpful for me as well, to, to kind of, you know, I know I asked you a lot of those questions, and I see a, a number of them have been noted here as well. So I really appreciate that.
And, and again, like I said, you know, myself, Joe, you know, we've all been in different districts, and every district does it a little bit different. So, taking what has historically been here, you know, that's what, excuse me, I have a froggy throat, I'm sorry. That's what we have for now. I mean, I, it is pretty well laid out, I mean, this template. So, at first I looked at it, and I was like, wow, that's like so different than what I'm used to. But when I got working on it, I was like, actually, you know, it's pretty clear. So, and the way the requests come in from the staff, they all have their department number, all of this already pre-populated for them to fill out. So it's really taking each request and typing it into their budget and tying it out, and then you go along. So, this is a pretty good format. We'll probably make some tweaks for next year, but, and we can certainly do a couple of, excuse me, a couple of graphs. The end of the year report, excuse me, breaks out a lot of this stuff, so I would probably take most of it out of there. Because there's one thing, too, that people have to realize, that over time, in any district, there might be things that were lumped together three years ago, and then they started breaking it apart, for instance, and I'll just use HR, that was under the administration last year. I have moved it. And I don't have the information of what was moved last year, but I know that in the budget document, they sort of moved some things around to say, this makes more sense up here, and took it and the history with it. But I don't have any information on exactly what things were moved. So, you know, it's, it's, it'll be a very close number, but the end of the year report is where they really have to pick it apart and report it. So, that would give us a good number. So, but I did want to mention, and Dr. Baye just mentioned about the additional L teachers, but I do want to sort of mention other hires that happened during this year that are baked in, that were not budgeted. So, three L teachers, the assistant L director, I'm not sure if that's the exact title, Amy Quilley's assistant director, was added this year, not budgeted. We just added five building-based subs, one for each elementary, because they just can't get any subs. So those are baked in as five salaries into this budget. The RISE teacher was added, one kindergarten teacher was added. And we are right now adding a preschool teacher and two aides that we are hiring at, at this moment due to enrollment that also were not budgeted. So that's a pretty fair amount, when you add up all those salaries, that we are hiring and paying in this year, but were not budgeted. And we will have to jockey things around to find the money to cover all of that. But with, you know, the preschool enrollment, which is a mandated program, and the L population that has been growing exponentially, that is mandated essentially, that's where most of that is. And of course, the RISE for the people at home, that is also a special ed program. So, really, it's been pretty much all about the mandated programs that we run, and the growth within the overall population, that in those subpopulations has required extra staffing.
And I think it's important for a couple of things, because the committee did vote for, and put into the budget, for example, a assistant director for English language learners. But then, when we came in, those numbers were not in that plot, where it should have been in that line item. So in other words, there was a commitment, but then it wasn't there. Now, where it went, that, that was, that's what happened between town meeting and so on, after town meeting. So that's why we made that determination. When it comes to the RISE teachers, the three ELs and the pre-K, those are mandates, those are, those are situations where we really need to talk around the area of, specifically in special education, finding a way to fund that account for special education surprises that can happen during the middle of a school year. Just a couple of big top-down type of comments that I, I wanted to make as you, as you continue to, to look at this. The principals and directors and assistant superintendents will and are all invited to our next meeting on the 21st. I want them to be here, and be prepared to answer questions. We will be continuing to look at this budget. On Tuesday, I am meeting with the central office administrators to really take a look at the budget and make some further changes, updates, and so on and so forth. So it's cleaner for your next meeting, if you will. ESSER is one of our biggest issues, I think you all know that, in terms of positions that go into the budget to support. Technology, you will see, has some significant numbers, and that, and safety as well. And then, of course, special education and transportation are always two areas that, for 15 years, I've had to find ways and be creative and, and all of that stuff. The biggest concern is that we have contracts that aren't settled. And, and so we need to, we need to get those done, because that will stabilize these numbers, and allow for us to fix numbers into the appropriate places, and then figure out, is there other numbers that can be moved around in order to make the budget a final budget number that you will, that you'll vote on. The, the other issue is the recommendations for new positions in the future, and needs, and so on and so forth. To be quite honest, some of that, except for ELs and special ed, some of that will slow down over the next three to five years, in my opinion, because I think we're going to take a look at, A, prioritizing class size, which we continue to do in this budget. Two, what are we doing in terms of different pathways at the secondary level? Three, how are we taking a look at keeping students in school through alternative education means, that I think we need to take a look at, which one of the biggest issues there is actually space, more so than anything else. And then, the big one, that we have a commitment to, is in a couple of years, when you get some really high-end reporting about baselines, where we are and where we want to go, that's, that's a fiscal year that I think will have a lot of difficult conversation about priorities, because there's only so much money that we can have. But we also need to go backwards to what Jonathan and the team has been doing for a number of years now, which is the triennial plan. So your, your last budget that, that you'll be voting on will have that aligned as well, so that you can see the plan and the budget going hand in hand, in the areas that it's supposed to go hand in hand. That'll become probably a two to three-page executive summary, where we really pinpoint special education, EL, a triennial plan, other things that we're trying to do, transportation costs. Just to share what we're up against, to prior discussions that we've had around money, it's costing as much as $2,000 a week to transport a student. I want to just put that out there. It's costing us as much as $2,000 a week to transport a student. That student needs to be transported safely to wherever they're going for the purposes of their education, and coming here and so on and so forth. That's a given. But you have a resolution that you'll be looking at in the near future. Yellow bus transportation, and special ed transportation, needs a serious review by the Commonwealth. This is price gouging. I have no problem saying it, I've been saying it for years. There is no need to be cost, to, to be doing what we're doing to public education and the cost of transportation, none whatsoever, especially coming out of COVID. I know it's hard to find drivers, I know gas is high, I get it. But $2,000 a week is, doesn't, it just doesn't seem that that's, that's equitable to the public domain area of, of public education. I'll leave it at that. But that's an area where I hope in the resolutions, the only one that I'm saying to you, please support anything that allows for the Commonwealth to really take a look at transportation and competition.
And I just wanted to add to, again, I know the committee knows, but for the public, the out-of-district tuition that the operational services division of, you know, the state sets the rates for the out-of-district private schools every year. And probably a lot of people did hear about it last year during the budget process, but the state gave a 14% increase to all those schools last year for this year. And they just came out with that the state has already determined that it will average 4.7% increase next year. So, which is incorporated. But I will say that before last year, 2.8 was the typical average for increases for out-of-district school tuitions. So even at the 4.7, much less than the 14, it's still more significant than it would have been. We also, you know, it's great that a couple of years ago, they decided to do some reimbursement for sped transportation in the circuit breaker, which didn't used to exist. So, that's, you know, what we used for the tuition and the transportation so far, we looked at that. Every year, the state comes out with what is the foundation for each out-of-district child, a student, and that goes up year to year, of what the taxpayer is responsible for. So, for next year, it's just north of 51,000. That's what the taxpayers have to pay before there's any, the claim is only after 51,000 per student. And then they've been running 75%. It used to be less than that, around 71, 72, some years 68. If the state budget maintains, then, you know, and, and they maintain the 75%, that's what we would expect to see on the tuition. Transportation, I believe, was at 57% last year. So, we don't know what the percentages will be either, like you never know until the state budget's done. So that's, that's just, you know, another variable that we have to wait and see. And then, on the expense budgets I failed to mention earlier, that we gave guidance to everybody, you know, all the budget makers, 2% increase, basically for inflation. And one would argue that that's not even keeping up with inflation. But due to increased enrollment and other factors, it's not that everybody would be at a 2%. Of course, it, you know, it depends on head count and other things that they have to do. So, and then, a couple of department heads said that their requests last year were cut in the final budget, some of them a little bit significantly. So, we reinstated what they asked for last year, which was in line with what they had in prior years. And, you know, obviously, as we go along, if, if cuts have to be made across the board to expense budgets, or whatever has to happen, we know that anything could happen. But, so I just wanted to give a little bit of guidance. If you see in certain lines, well, that doesn't look like 2%. Some of it was reinstating in a couple of departments, science in particular. And then others were just because the amount of students in their class, how many sections they're teaching, things like that. So. Lastly, too, you will see on the band, we did add specifically, now that Stoughton had the great good fortune to host a band competition this year, and, and apparently, once you do that, you're sort of in the queue to be able to keep doing that, and that's the intent. So we did put $10,000 in, in that line, to be able to cover that wonderful event that happens with all the, all the kids in the band. So, you'll see that, and there is a note in there for that. There's really not much else that's significant in the overall budget to speak of. So, again, the biggest thing is once we, yeah, once we, once we settle unit A, that is the biggest unknown amount that we need to incorporate into their lines, that the correct amounts, once we have those. So.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Fabian?
Hi, just the formatting, I, I like the fact that you put the page numbers and row headings. That's helpful. And then, wanted to ask, so FY3 budget approved, and then FY23 expended. For the differences that occur, is that rolled into the actual difference at the end of the column? Where, where are those differences captured?
Differences in.
FY23 approved and expended, yeah.
I mean, well, the expanded, I had sent a note before that I have not finished that column, because the town has quite a few of our entries still to post. So, I don't have final numbers. They're, they're closing the books. They were going to last week, but they had to extend for another two weeks, so I think it's on the 16th. So, as quite a few entries post over the next week and a half, then I will be able to print out a final and finish that. It will show as zero remaining. I do have entries up with the town to say that we will expand every single penny.
Mm-hmm.
But. But it's just going to change so many lines that I got pretty well along, and then the ones I thought, well, you know, some of these are going to change, so I might as well just wait till the next version and actually have the real. So, you'll see, you know, in each budget, what's expanded is not going to match up. Some go under and some go over, but the point is that the expanded will match what was voted.
It will.
Yeah. Thank you.
Lindsay, Chris? First of all, just wanted to say thank you very much to you and everyone else who provided answers. I sent a list of, like, kind of nitpicky clarifying, not nitpicky, but like, just a lot of clarifying questions, yeah. So, really appreciate you, like, providing the context and, like, background. It was really just, Dr. Baio was talking about, like, the story of the district, and I think that's what I was looking for in a lot of places, was just like the story behind it. So, really, really appreciated that because I feel like I understand what I'm looking at a lot better. Also, the notes are also really, really helpful. Yeah, I think, this has sort of been alluded to, but I wanted to ask it explicitly just to give folks the opportunity to answer. I think, like, we've been really responsive in the budget in the last couple of years, this year in particular, to, like, changes in the student population and just, like, needs that are arising. And that is all good and also legally required. But are there ways that we are being, like, proactive and planning ahead here that we want to highlight? Like, anything that we're kind of putting in place to get ahead of those changes as they continue?
Yeah, I think, I'm glad you asked that question because it's been the one that's been at the top of my head since I got here. We are doing a fantastic job as a community, keeping our students in Stoughton public schools. 93% of the students who are school-aged in this town attend your schools. Okay, that's number one. Number two, and as important, the number of students out of district for a district this size is actually quite good. I can tell you right now, districts with 3,700-plus kids who don't have 44, 45 kids out of district, they have 70, 80 kids out of district. So, what does that mean? That means that your specialized programs are working, and they are less expensive than sending a student out of district and in the best interest of the child in almost every case, except in some of the clinical situations where a child needs to go to a better specialized area. So, those are two parts of the story that I like to tell. The third part is you have a commitment to class sizes that is better than in any place I've worked in in 15 years. That doesn't mean it's perfect, but I am telling you right now, there's a good commitment there. Could it be better in some areas? Absolutely, and I think we can work on that. But that's a third area. Now, class size can be very much debated, especially if you graduated 50 years ago, like I did, and you went, you know, up the hill with shorts on in the middle of a winter storm with no shoes, you didn't take the bus, and there were 50 kids in the classroom. We are completely changed today, right? And we know that because of what we're seeing, not only in Stoughton but throughout communities. And so, you have one of the strongest EL departments in the Commonwealth. I sat in here the other day with directors from throughout the entire region, led by Dr. Quealy and Ms. Fernandez, just, they're just wowed by the things that we're doing in Stoughton. And we're learning from them, too, at the same time. So, those populations. And then, lastly, where are our students going to school? I don't have to go too far than looking right across over there tonight and celebrating her and her achievements as an individual, but collectively, telling that story. We haven't told that story in Stoughton, folks, we just haven't. And I'm not saying that as a knock on anybody, that's just the way I like to do things. This is about the kids. Yeah, it's always going to be about too much money and it's expensive and so on and so forth. And we'll work with that. And then, I think, your staff, the number of people with high-qualified degrees who have decided to stay here through the good days and the bad days and haven't left, and the people that have joined us from other communities. Like I said to you earlier in another meeting, people wanting to come here, regardless of some of the issues that are going on, because we're hiring, and yes, we're not hiring at Step 1 because there is no Step 1 people available. So, we're willing to say, come on over and teach our kids if you're highly qualified. So, to me, it's that team effort, and we need to tell that story. And I think it starts with that beginning of my comments, really, like, we are doing some really good stuff and we need to tell the story. And Jeff Pickett and I have been talking about telling the story a little bit more, so then we can really get into what I know Armando wants me to talk about, which is those numbers and how do we make them better, which is my job, that's my job, right? So, those would be a couple of the areas that excite me.
Thank you, I'm excited, too.
Was there anything else on to you?
I guess I do have another question, which is, we've sort of already touched on, so I don't want to, like, spend too much time on it, but just thinking about, like, as we go through the budget process, if there's a process for, like, cuts or, like, not, like, reductions, like, I know this is sort of a bottom-up, like, what's the most we can do here? But if we do need to, like, make adjustments, what is the process for continuing to get stakeholder input in that?
Well, you know, we have two things. We have the budget as it sits, and then we have a fair amount of requests that are not in the budget, and some of it staffing, and Dr. Baio said it earlier, and some of it might be painting some rooms or, you know, different things, right? Some carts for the, you know, Chromebooks or whatever, you know, different things. So, those are all on a list unfunded at this time. So, we have the budget. At the next meeting, there'll be a list of all that, that we will meet internally with, you know, like I said, the stakeholders internally to prioritize that in the district, and that will be, if there were extra funds after the state aid comes out, we will have the priority order of what would be filled. Conversely, you know, here we have a budget that, you know, will get the guidance from the town to start with. Dr. Baio had mentioned, you know, having an article potentially, you know, for the spring. And additionally, when the House One numbers come out, and, you know, which isn't, of course, finalized for a while, but it's usually a good indicator, and see what we're going to get for aid. If all of that together, with what the town's initial guidance is and what the aid will be, does not cover where we are on this budget, then we would have internal conversations. I'm sure I don't want to speak for you, but this probably, it tends to be in most districts that you start with some of the expense lines and before you go to staff, but it really depends. So, and again, there's things that were added, for instance, the five interventionists, and we would have to talk about, does that take a priority over something else? That's really important, that we keep those people and have that services, and maybe something else can be reduced, or is it that, well, that wasn't in before, and, you know, whatever. So, those would be conversations with the team.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up, Mr. Ford and I had a discussion earlier today about, there are expectations in Stoughton that I'm just learning around the budget process and programming and what we do, that as a team, we need to sit down and say, for example, and one of them would be, you know, our instructional coaches, our interventionists that have been part of ESSER money and so on and so forth. But there are other things as well that have expectations that we need to really take a look at and see, is that a priority over something else that's in the budget? But the budget is going to be very much an ebb and flow between now and May-June town meeting for a number of different reasons. The big picture of the entire budget, state aid is very important to the town of Stoughton as it pertains to us as a school department. So, that's the deal breaker for us in terms of, is it, you know, $1,000 a student or $60 a student that we're getting? And what does that mean? So, that'll be the differential part of the final decisions that you folks will be able to make through recommendations and all of that stuff.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Those are all my questions, in addition to the massive list I already sent you.
I also had a massive list, and I really appreciate you answering everything from big-picture questions to very nitpicky little things, and I appreciate you addressing that. And I think one of the things I asked about was the triennial plan, but knowing that we're going to get kind of a cover sheet with information, that's going to be really helpful to know, to, again, tell that story, that this ties into what we're doing. So, I think my questions from then were answered. I'm sure I'll be back with more, especially over the next couple of weeks.
And I really appreciate the committee just fire away the questions, right? Because what it does is it allows for us to do some more digging and gives us the time, instead of coming to a meeting and, and we're happy to, you know, to share that. I actually suggested the other day that we may just take the questions and put them into kind of like a QA format and just have it, just put it on our website and say, you can, these are the questions that have been asked. You can watch the video, and here's other questions that have been asked, and here they are for everybody to have in case people want to dig a little deeper.
Chris's question?
Yeah, a couple, we're going to go through this process several times, so this isn't like the one shot to ask questions.
We have the November 21st meeting, we're going to go over the budget again. There's a public hearing on December 12th at 7:00, and the public is welcome. Again, it's a public hearing, anybody's welcome to come in and give their opinion. And then, we have a vote, and we can have a discussion before that vote as well. And then, we'll be discussing it more. We go before FinCom last year, it was the first March, and then we'll go before annual town meetings. So, you will be dreaming this budget by the time we're done, so, yeah.
And if I can add, too, as Dr. Baio just said, it's a lot easier and gives us time to actually have the questions emailed, if you have anything, even, you know, one-offs, whatever. Not only will it get out to the public sooner or too if we have it on the website, but it gives us time if we have to talk to a specific individual about their program and what they're changing this year or whatever that may be. So, emailed questions, either through the chair or however you do it as a committee, whatever you choose to do, would be, would also allow for when we do meet to move at, you know, a pretty good clip and have the answers for you, rather than have to come back at another meeting.
Yeah, some, I mean, I had one observation and one question, and the one question is, I didn't even realize that the FY23 numbers weren't finalized yet. But it's like, well, it's really hard to assess FY25 without any identification of what FY24. And I realized, well, fiscal year, what, starts July 1st? You know, so that got me thinking about the budget timeline and process, and it makes zero sense whatsoever to me. I've only worked in one place that has done 18-month ahead planning, and they encountered some of the same issues, but they were self-funded and didn't have to, didn't have the fiscal challenges that we face here at the local level. So, that was a big question. The other question I think I already did email is just, once again, I think it's too much to ask for at this point in the process, since the stakeholders have already been consulted. But thinking about a budget narrative, I think, would be super helpful for me because so many, like, so many of these numbers seem too round for them to be actual needs, just saying. And I have been in organizations where we've done zero-based budgeting, which would be my next recommendation, but that requires time and transition to get into that process for folks to feel comfortable with it. To me, it seems like the easier fix would be that the budget timeline is, as you alluded to, superintendent. So, those are just kind of my overarching questions, but nothing, I think, that really can be addressed tonight.
I can speak to a couple of different things as, you know, the budget process is through the town chatter, so that would be a process we would have to have some further discussions with. And as you know, we do spend significant amount of time as a town, with town meetings, seven, eight, nine nights as part of the process. So, it does require FinCom, who are all volunteers, to have this stuff ahead of time and be able to schedule meetings, multiple meetings that they have and so on and so forth. I do think a budget narrative is the way to go, in terms of, that's the way I've done my budgets in the past, is really take a look at...
I've never seen one without a budget narrative before, so...
Yeah, and my presentation going forward, and I will tell you for FY, definitely for FY26, is once we have this, if you will, really in a place, really, this becomes a three-ring binder that is broken down, not only as a narrative, but it's broken down by school, it's broken down by department. That's where I came from. My budget was $36 million, but my budget was 80 pages long. And the reason for that is I spent a lot of time, after I received it from the business office, my job, along with the team, working with the business, is to really say, how much money are we spending at the Hanson School with 273 kids versus the Wilkins? As much as we wanted it all to be equitable, those schools have different kids in them with different needs. And so, we would then prioritize that. And that's what I love about what Jonathan and the team have done before I got here, which is the triennial plan is an 18-month, 24-month, 36-month plan, right? And so, we need to tie it in. And that's my goal, is that the next triennial plan, which will be incorporated, I believe, beginning in '26, the goal would be that we do another three-year, that we're really looking at the big items that we need as a district, like we've done with EL in that triennial plan, special education and SEO. And then, is it working or not?
Right.
Zero-based budgeting is one of the biggest questions that happens in the public entity world. It just, that and the request for a five-year forecast. Those are the two most difficult and not overly well-done in the public domain because of there's so much flow around the economy. And does the money come, or it doesn't come, or, you know, whatever. It's, there's so much of an ebb and flow. And then, what happens is, certain populations want to hold you to that forecast that's three years away, and it becomes so different because 171 EL students moved in.
Yeah.
And you couldn't have projected that.
Yeah. Yeah, you do raise a great point, and I have seen in one instance where the budget was actually aligned to values in action.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's really what a budget is supposed to be. And making that, that strong a connection, even Mr. Bovosa, to your point, you know, visually, making that connection from one to the other would do a better job of telling the story of how we are prioritizing money. I think it might make it easier and more palatable to town member, you know, meeting members who have to vote on the budget with a good conscience.
Yeah, and to the narrative, what would happen in that particular case is that we would take Mr. Ford's office and under instruction and technology, and he would be putting that narrative of what the final story looks like. HR, I would be doing more of the executive part of the narrative. Our principals would each be speaking to their schools, and then, the budget would be either included or right on the back end and referred to Appendix B, Appendix C, whatever the case may be. And people read it like a story and say, okay, now I get why you need this money.
Right.
Instead of just looking at a line item.
Yeah.
And then, the executive summary would talk about the increases, why do we need $250,000 more for? Why do we, why are we, why were we able to save? Whatever the story is, narrative is the way to go. But you have to be very careful because you have to be as precise as you can. And the problem with that is, when something is due in December and you're meeting in March and you're not voting until June, I can tell you that my life changes every single day, never mind that story. And then, I'm a liar, that's the accusation, right? We don't trust the person who put it together, it was voted, and then the story's being told and the numbers have changed, and the accusations begin. And so, that's why many of us on this side keep it to a very short narrative, not the longer narrative. The longer narrative, I'll tell you, one of the best school systems in the Commonwealth writes one of the best narratives around. Wellesley Public Schools, I think, does one of the best narrative budgets that I've ever seen. But, you know, they have a different process than we do. It's not an excuse, but it's a way to go.
But I was there for three years. And I helped make that part. But I will say, I actually brought, you know, I have in my documents, all of the documents of my budget book, which I used, the one that we did in Wellesley, similar in Watertown for the last five years, so that's been eight years for me. It's not, you know, I'm a big believer in not a lot of text in it. And when I got to Watertown, the school committee chair said, the person before me said, "No one even reads this, this is ridiculous," like, you know, and it was too much. It was the history of the town and all this other stuff. And I just said, yeah, that's not my gig and that's not where I go with it anyways. About what are we doing for the budget, you know? And so, the, and what we did there was, not everybody had a piece to talk about the narrative and the budget. Some of them are very clear-cut and small items, but, and so, we didn't include everything. But certainly, the Student Services Director had a section, just two pages essentially, highlight reel. The Director of Curriculum, Teaching and Learning is what it was called over there, would put in, you know, a couple of graphs on student achievement or MCAS or whatever. And then, we had, you know, two pages for each principal where their student enrollment would be, their MCAS scores just at the top. They would do a bulleted list of what they are doing in the current year with their budget, and then they would do a bulleted list of what they intend to do with the budget funds they're asking for next year. It was just, you know, two pages, that's it. It was just, you know, two pages, that's it. And it was not a lot of, it's not paragraphs or text or a written story, but it tells the story really quickly in a quick visual. And that's where everybody landed, both in the districts, the city council, the school committee, and everybody just like, this is it. So I have all my templates with me. But for, that takes a lot of time.
Yes.
And Wellesley does not, you know, have to have it. They do finish their original budget in December and then they start talking to the school committee in January, February, and they, it goes to March. So in Watertown, we, the public hearing was in April. So when you have the time all fall to have all the meetings and have more in-depth conversation and more student stats and everything else, you can do that better. As far as zero-based budgeting, from talking to people on the listserv, Watertown thought about doing this year and they ditched the plan. It's, it's good to a certain extent. But the reality is with a $60 million, I round up to the nearest million, $10 million, with a $60 million budget, no one is going to monitor that. So the reality is if somebody puts they're going to buy X amount of paperback books and X amount of pads of drawing paper and X amount of whatever, no one, including my office and myself, and I'll say it right out, is ever going to look at that and monitor it. That, that's, it's getting so far in the minutia that you're losing the big picture. So what most districts do is they do not do zero-based on the supply budgets that everybody has. They, they really don't do that. So it's been a hot topic of conversation on the businessman to do listserv. And many people have said their districts tried it and ditched it because it wasn't really working. It's only as good as, as someone sitting there, you need to hire two full-time staff to sit there and look at everything every day, every single purchase. And it's just not realistic. So Watertown just decided to go. They were all set that they were going to do it.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, that's one of the reasons I left.
It takes a massive time commitment.
Yeah, it's.
And it is very much in the detail. One of the things I appreciate about it is not necessarily the accountability on the other end, but just, you know, a lot of times we just get comfortable with, well, this is what we've always asked for. And if we don't ask for it, then we're not going to get it. So it becomes more of a, we're going to ask for something in case we need it as opposed to, this is what we really need to function effectively this year. Understanding, of course, that there's going to be some, you know, flux in funds and that you're going to need to, you know, take some from some areas. You need to be able to reprioritize funding accordingly to be responsive to the needs as they come up. But, but just to get, and I know, and I know this as an English staff person. You know, I was married to the number of books I could order every year and, you know, regardless of the student enrollment and, you know, it's, it's like.
Yes, it's sort of prescribed. And so a couple of things, and, you know, we'll work through, you know, as a team this coming year to see what we feel the appropriate changes should be in presentation and stuff when we have time, which is very little in this year. I mean, we're still digging in and talking to people. And frankly, I'm meeting people for the first time when I'm reaching out to them. By the way, I'm so-and-so and can I talk to you about your, whatever. So, but, you know, one thing, you know, that I don't know if it's ever been done here or not, I can't speak to it because I really don't have a lot of records from prior. So is really looking at, you know, how much per student. And that's not always true in everything in the school because as Dr. Bata said, there are sub-populations in each school, special programming.
Right.
And I'll just give you, for instance, when, you know, in Watertown, one of the principals said, well, I have the XYZ program in my school. So that, so much per elementary student doesn't really fit. And I said, well, you don't budget any of the staff, so that makes no difference in your budget. And do the kids in that special ed program actually need more books or more of anything than the kids who aren't in that program? And she goes, well, now that you said it, no. I said, and therefore you don't need more per student. They're all getting about the same amount of materials, maybe different materials, but, you know. So, so we have those conversations and, you know, that's something that we have to do. But I do see from what's coming in, there are some things that I look at and I say, hmm, but, you know, I mean, we don't have the time in this year to
Right.
change it.
Right.
That does not mean that as we go through the year, if we have a need somewhere else that we don't, just get in touch with the person and say, hey, you know what? In your school, the math department needs X more for more textbooks or whatever it is. And I would say to the principal, so you please tell me where in your overall school budget, including all the departments and the specialists, where you feel in your conversations within your school that you can take a little from here and there, whatever, to help out the math department. Couple other things is, you know, I talked to Jonathan the other day is to bring the curriculum money back under him instead of within the departments. And so we need to get a smoothed-out curriculum review cycle plan with a smoothed-out, whether it's $50,000 or $100,000, whatever it is, that would be in his budget. And as each subject matter, maybe it's math this year, and next year is humanities, and next year is something else, that that curriculum review cycle and getting replacement materials, software, books, et cetera, whatever they're going to do, is that he would work with, you know, each of those. And apparently you said that it used to be that way a number of years ago.
Well, it is that way again.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, you know, but pulling the money out of some of the budgets and putting it into his budget so that, so that there's that oversight at that level of ordering. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but it just gives us a smoothed-out number. I often do that with the textbooks too. You know, leave a little bit in people's eyes if they need to replace a book, if they have another student and they have to order one or two. We haven't had all these conversations yet, but it's just some ideas I'm throwing out there because, you know, somebody might need $30,000 worth of textbooks this year. And then it's sometimes ends up, has been baked into their budget for years. I'm not, I haven't really seen it too much here, so, but I've seen it at all the places where they don't ever need that $30,000 again. But there it sits, you know what I mean?
Right, right, right.
So I am not really seeing that though here. I'm not, it's looking, you know, actually overall, it's looking pretty tight here compared to other districts I've been, so.
Thank you for that.
I have a question that, as you talk, I'm fascinated with your experience and knowledge. I just came up with questions that, through all these years that you've been working with budgets, can you pretty much give us an idea of a time where you've looked at a budget and said, wow, this money's allocated perfectly when it's needed? And it looks great and it actually worked great?
The short answer is no. There's, you know, I've worked on the town side too, et cetera, but, and in private sector. But the thing that's different in schools, which we all know, but I don't know if everybody really brings it to the forefront of their mind in the public and stuff to think about, is that if it's DPW or whatever it is, they typically keep roughly the same amount of staff who all roughly work 40 hours and some overtime. There's not a lot of variation in the salaries. And so maybe there'd be more salt and stuff like that on a tough winter or whatever it is. But their budgets are pretty static with some increases. We take care of people. And people you cannot plan on, you cannot project what's going to happen. You can't possibly know. So not only do we have all of our staff, and then we have all of the students, and then we have outside providers and all these districts that we work with, like, you know, the special ed went up to 14%, you know, on the outer district. We, the busing is crazy, like. So we are subject, I feel anyway, to a lot more variation in things external to the town and external to the school as well as specifically internal to us, whether it's if somebody's out and we have to get a sub suddenly, you know, at $150 a day for three months. You know, a lot of times in other departments, they don't get a sub if the person's out there getting their sick time pay. And a lot of the town departments, certainly the police have to have coverage and stuff like that. I don't mean that, but a lot of town departments, they don't bring in another person. They muddle through, make do. We can't do that, you know? We have to have that coverage, those services, all of the time. So the variation and the pressures for everything that happens on a day-to-day basis is usually not seen in most other, and even at the state level. I mean, unless it's, you know, public safety and things like that. You know, we, it's just different in a school. And, you know, we all know that sitting here, but I don't think sometimes people have that, you know, concrete realization in their mind when they're looking at the variations in the school budgets from year to year. And what happens even within a year where we thought we planned the best and everybody dug in and gave a really good, like, you know, this is where I think I'll be. And somebody moves away, somebody, something happens, a teacher moves, and then we got the next one that was $20,000 more. I mean, it's like, it's constant every single day. So I know that's long-winded. I apologize for that. And I'm, some of it I'm saying also for the public who might not have, you know, been that, as aware of all of the things that happen. But I do think, looking at this, you know, I see some things that, you know, we'll have more discussion about next year. And it doesn't mean that there's anything wrong or bad because I don't think there is. I just might have a little bit more questions, a couple of things. And it might come back that there's a very good answer. And I say, okay, that makes sense that I don't even know yet because I haven't been here long enough. But they're minor. I do think by and large, this budget has been well-taken care of over the years, is set up well. It's within munis and within the planning documents. It is properly segregated into each program or intent or, you know, what we're doing and grade levels. You know, even the teachers for each grade level. I don't usually do that. It's all, all in, like, your teachers are in one line for a budget presentation. So, you know, I think there's a good amount of detail in this document. The layout is not the best, I agree. But I think there's a good amount of detail and the numbers tell the story. But yes, we have to build out the context in a budget book for next year, without a doubt.
What you talked about, the DPW and compare to people is part of the story we have to tell.
Yes.
Well, I know we can keep talking all night. So we'll see if that, we'll be back on the 21st to talk some more. So keep asking questions.
Madam Chair, I plan to keep that agenda between the two of us as close to only working on the budget as much as possible.
Okay, all right, we'll try to do that. And then we have the public hearing on the 12th as well. I do want to make a couple of statements for public record. We will need all of the chapter somebody SOA money that we get this year. I know we gave $2 million to the town for the health insurance crisis. We made clear that was a one-time thing. It has to be a one-time thing. We are going to need that money. We have real needs. Just all of our students are going to need this. We need to keep it for the kids. So I just urge the committee to, to stand with me and feeding firm on that. So I want to make that clear. Again, we'll keep this discussion going, but let's turn to the MASC resolutions review. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, that's the MASC, and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, which is MASSS, is holding their joint annual conference later this week, November 8 through 10 in Hyannis. Dr. Bata will be attending the superintendent's end, and Lindsay will be representing us at the MASC panels and events. You've had a chance to review the resolutions that will go before the delegate assembly. We have the opportunity, I know Lindsay, mayor, is looking at the possibility of attending the delegate assembly. And we have the opportunity to appoint her to vote on any of the resolutions on our behalf. If there was any that we felt really fell specifically to Stoughton, I'd like to open the floor for discussion on this matter. Lindsay, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about what you're planning for the, for the conference?
Yeah, no, I'm excited to attend. I was able to attend last year. It was really helpful. I feel like now a year further in, I have a little bit more context and have better questions to ask, so very excited for that. I do, I'm still waiting on a couple scheduling things that, like, I may have another commitment during the delegate assembly that I'm trying to clarify. But if I am able to attend, would be honored to do that if the committee decides to do that. I think Resolution 2 really stood out to me, which is the one that Dr. Bata mentioned about investigating transportation bidding practices. Given all the conversation about school transportation that we've had this evening and many other evenings, that feels like potentially a place where we could, I don't know, offer our vote there. But yeah, open to other thoughts.
Resolution 2 stood out to me as well. I don't know if anybody else had thoughts of.
Number two.
Number two?
Yep.
All right. I'll be on, any?
I have a question.
Yes.
How are these, how do these resolutions come about? How do you submit one?
That's a good question.
So the process is that the, your association has a timeline period where you can have your, a topic that comes up. You do a public hearing on that topic. You take your vote and you send your topic forward as a resolution. It then goes through, it gets, then it goes through the MASC internal process on which ones get voted and moved forward.
Any time period of that?
I'll get you the time period, but I believe it starts sometime like, like right after January 1st for next year already because they, they meet as regional boards and then internally to discuss the process.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have one in mind.
I do.
All right, we'll save it for a later discussion, but let's keep it to the ones we're here. So we do have a couple of people interested in Resolution 2. Dr. Bata, I know that one stood out to you. Are there any others that really stood out as?
The ones that, the only ones that I always have concerns about are going to be the ones that are resolution but don't mention how it's going to be funded. So, you know, the, you know, how can you not support safe storage of firearms? But then the way this reads, it, I don't know if it flows the way it should. That's Resolution 8. The MCAS resolution is one that's really trying to look at, looking at other ways to assess students. Really, I mean, for Stoughton Public Schools, right now where we are, to me, that Resolution 2 is important because we will be going out to bid at some point. And if the Commonwealth could have some further. This is also coming out of our colleagues at Southeastern, which is our sending district. So being a sending district and supporting them is not a bad idea. Actually, we'd say it's a very good idea because they are your counterparts that represent the vocational school itself. And you can take the vote that says you're a supporter of Resolution 2 and provide Lindsay the opportunity that if these resolutions are tweaked, because sometimes there is an amendment made on the floor, then, you know, she has that, that will. So you can send her along and say, you need to support 2 if you're there. Everything else, it's up to you. You can do that. You can say, please only vote on number 2. Thanks for attending. And you could say, or you could give her the authority to say, based on any other changes that you see that would benefit Stoughton, please, please consider supporting. It's done very different ways because at the end of the days, I know that you folks are making a ton of money being on the school committee. And so people have to work around their schedules to go.
Making money. Just making sure for public record, they know. So how long do your physicians?
I got a $12 ticket to the Pops concert. That's been my theme for this year. Sorry, yes, we're not kidding.
So at the end, you don't have to do anything as a group except, you know, give her the confidence that she's going on your behalf if she can make it.
Does anybody have any thoughts or want to make a motion to you?
I would just like to further ditto what the superintendent said. That's super technical school committee lingo there around resolution two. I think that is definitely critical for Stoughton. I am very interested in resolution seven, but agree with the superintendent. Without a funding mechanism, it becomes another unfunded mandate and no accountability. But otherwise, I, I would say, as, as you see fit, you know, I feel very comfortable and confident in your ability to represent us well.
Don't know.
It would be my privilege to do so as my schedule allows, I'm working on it, but. Do we have to vote her anything or do we just put a vote?
No, she's attended, she's your representative attending already. If you had multiple of you, then you would have to take a vote on who is your voting delegate.
Okay. All right, well, that makes.
So one could attend to have fun, the other one had to go to the business meeting.
Well, yes, Lindsay, so we appreciate you attending and I will make sure that you have room in a future agenda to report back to us and let us know if anything happened.
Thank you.
All right, have a good time at the conference. That's easy, moving on. I lost my agenda.
Acceptance of the warrants.
Yes, acceptance of the warrants. Can I have a motion to accept the warrants? They've been signed and, or done there, okay. A motion to accept the warrants?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Lindsay, and so motion made by Lindsay, seconded by Armando. Moved and seconded, vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's carried five-zero, warrants have been accepted. Next is acceptance of the minutes from October 10th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to ask for any amendments or corrections for the minutes from the October 10th meeting.
I have an amendment.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Under public comment on the last sentence there, instead of invited the school committee members to the event, I'd like to specify what the event is and it's the U.S. bands competition.
Okay.
And I would like to also include at Stoughton High School.
At Stoughton High School, yes.
Thank you.
Right. Fabian, did you have any amendments, corrections?
I think there was just grammar.
Okay.
Number four, new business. The middle.
Yes.
Says charge for athletic events and the students involved in school music programming are in possession. Is that right? The students involved are in, is that, the R should be there?
Oh, but yes, because they're saying the students, the students involved.
Are in.
Quote, in the band competition are in. That was the understood.
Okay. All right. Awkward, but.
There's, and the next, the next sentence, other, reached out to other districts for best practices and report back. There's an R there, so that is correction. It did have a correction under number five, old business, the elementary school building project. The building authorities, facilities assistant subcommittee meeting was September 27th. Was on September 27th. I just wanted to add that in. Armando, any amendments?
Yes, on page two at the top, fourth sentence down, must at the end, name spelled wrong.
Okay, got to get that one right.
On page three, does bottom of the paragraph, one paragraph up from the bottom, name spelled wrong.
Okay. All right, see it, okay.
Page three, again at the top, second paragraph. For a special education parent advisory council met two weeks ago and it went very well.
Okay.
And then quarterly financial report presentation, last sentence, Ms. Heidi Perkins says she would have more detailed information to report once the contract settles and mid-year, once school has been, I don't understand.
Okay, I think she's, she's, she's kind of writing sentences very quickly. I think the intent was.
Mid-school, once year.
And she would report back, and she, once the contract settles and.
Yeah, mid-year, once, yeah. Has been a session longer, yeah, just clarify that.
And I had one more correction for, so I was looking to, for. The student advisory council representative was Max Fokraka, his name was misspelled under, in attendance. So I will get the correct spelling to our secretary, recording secretary. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, I think we've taken care of anything. So can I have a motion to approve the amendments as amended?
So moved.
All right, that was made by Fabian, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Chris, motion's been moved and seconded. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion's been carried five-zero. Quickly getting to old business, elementary school building project update and responsibilities. The MS, as you know, the MSBA board voted unanimously to approve the project's move onto the schematic design phase. They were very complimentary of the plan's clarity. I want to thank the entire design team and everyone in Stoughton Public Schools and the community who's gotten us to this point. I had an opportunity last night to thank Senator Walter Timmelti and his staff popped into the meeting to support us. So that was great to have, to have that. They also made a very specific mention of the, their approval of our support of the consolidation. They noted that a couple of school districts have not been doing that. That's definitely something the MSBA believes very strongly in. So I want to thank all of the past school committee members who started that conversation and to you guys for having these difficult conversations and voting us forward on the consolidation. So special shout-out to you, you didn't realize it at the time. At that very same meeting where they voted on our project, they also voted to raise the cost funding limit. It was previously $393 per square foot. It is now $550, $550 per square foot. And there's up to $55 per square foot for the site work. This means that projects in progress at the project scope or later, that includes us, the total construction cost funding limit is now $605 per square foot. That's due to the, the state's FY24 budget. It had an increase in the cap for the MSBA and there was a $100 million supplemental grant. So this is really good news for us. Doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, all of our building will be covered or that we'll get all of this, but this does raise the amount that the MSBA will potentially put forward to us. So that was very good news, it was a very relief and then we got the vote. So very, very good news for us from the MSBA. The next building committee meeting is Wednesday, November 15th at 7:00 PM here in the school committee conference room at the district offices on Pierce Street. Anything else about the building, Dr. Bata?
No, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Probably because I don't have my timeline here. When will the schematic be done?
The schematic design.
Schematic design will be done, I believe it's by February.
Yes.
And then it goes towards MSBA approval, I believe it's March, April, and then town meeting and vote in May, June, and whatever the timeline will be for that. I believe the goal is May, June.
Okay, thanks.
And then schematic design will include more financial details and specifics like that, getting down to more than nitty-gritty details.
Will there be any, one more question? Any preliminary schematic design that we can take a look at?
You'd have to come to the building committee meeting. So, but I will ask if there's something. I know that they would like to come back and do another presentation to us as they get some of the financial details to come back. So I will see if they want to come back in maybe January, once we've done the budget.
And if I may, today, so for the information that, that today we worked with the IRA on the actual building, the size of an office, the bathrooms where they should be located, the exits, that type of stuff, gave them feedback. We had classroom teachers giving feedback, specialists, administrators, so on and so forth. And there'll be another one of those coming up as well.
All right, other matters? I know that homework policy is on people's minds. We'll put that on a future agenda, which is, I think we need to have that publicly on agenda so people know because we will have people who are very interested in that and will want to give feedback on that. So that, that will be coming up, a discussion coming up tonight. We've had enough with the budget and everything else. Does anybody have any other correspondence, any other matters?
I just wanted to, since it's, it's the week of Veterans Day, just thank all the veterans here in Stoughton. I know Stoughton's very proud of being a community that supports its veterans. There's a very big difference between Veterans Day and Memorial Day. It's today's, it's to really not only care for those that we've lost, but really for those that have come forward to protect us. So happy Veterans Day to all our Stoughton veterans.
Well said. All right, if there's no other business, I would like to point out our next meeting is the 21st of November here, at 7:00 PM here in the school committee conference room at the district office. Public hearing on the budget again is December 12th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, oh, so moved.
You guys seem like you really want to stay a little longer.
Yeah. Seconded.
No? We don't need to work up.
All right, seconded for Lindsay.
We'll continue executive.
All right. Moved and seconded, roll call votes?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried, the meeting is adjourned. What is it? What is it?
8:47.
8:47, okay. Thank you all for coming, good night, and again, happy Veterans Day.
So back to executives.